Meeting of the South Hundred and Regional Board of Education called to order adequate notice is required by the Open Public Meeting Act as provided on December 10, 2020 by hosting a notice with the respective clerks of the City of Lambeauville, Borough of Stockton, and Township of West Amwell advertised on December 3, 2020, and Hundred County Democrat and Trenton Times newspaper. Please stand beside Luke.
... of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation of God, invisible, deliver to me that is all.
Roll call. Lauren Brunt-Serntholz.
Here.
Martha Dennis.
Here.
Jim Gallagher.
Here.
Trace Petrucci.
Here.
Diana Purcell.
Here.
Ronnie Todd-Marina.
Here.
Megan Warren.
Here.
Filomena Hicks.
Here.
Kevin Kovalaski.
Here.
All right, we'll move right into PTO, PK, and LEF update. PTL, if you have anything, please come on up, Jess.
Hi guys, Jessica Hartigan, West Amwell PTO. I want to start off by saying that we are so proud to have been able to participate in the Teacher of the Year Selection Committee, and we would like to congratulate this year's winners. All of our teachers and staff members are amazing, but this year, a few stood out. Our holiday shop was a really great success. The kids were so excited and they were really proud of their purchases. Our sixth graders and their amazing parents are still rocking it at fundraising, and with this year's, with this last fundraiser, they're well over $12,000. And lastly, I would like to say thank you to the board members leaving, and welcome to the board, welcome to the new board members. We look forward to working together for the kids.
Okay, moving on to correspondence, they're posted, and moving to recognition of board members.
Yes, so, it's a special evening, a special meeting. So I just want to start off by saying, and I hope folks who are here in the audience and at home, it's not easy being a board member. It is a challenge, it's a huge time commitment, obviously it's a volunteer position, and beyond the Monday nights that everyone sees us at our board meetings, we have committee meetings, all kinds of different things that are going on. So, you know, it takes a lot of time and effort balancing, you know, personal lives within the lives of a board member. So, for all of our board members, it is truly appreciated, all the work that you do. But tonight specifically, we have three board members that will be leaving us. So I just want to mention a little bit about each one, and then we have a certificate for each one of our board members that will be leaving us as well. First is Filomena, who has been with us the last three years, and what I'd like to say about Filomena is, one of the best things is she's an educator, so obviously she is in the business and understands what it's like on a day in and day out basis. I appreciate your passion specifically with transparency to the community and really having a community engagement. And Filomena was our chair most recently for our school and community committee, and that was one of the things all the time that she reminded the committee and the board of how important it is to get input from the community, feedback from the community, ideas about a lot of different things. And then also the work that you've done with our green team. So, those of you that have been around know that in some of our board meetings over the last couple of years, we've honored our green team for sustainability awards, and obviously Filomena was part of that committee of doing that work behind the scenes with Chelsea Gardner at LPS, and really laid a great foundation for the district, and the hope is some of our other buildings that have not been nominated yet and achieved that award will do so in the near future. So, thank you for all of your support, and obviously all the different perspectives you brought to the Board of Education. No doubt you'll be missed. And then Lauren, so from your perspective, again, you started at the same time as Filomena, and again, education and higher education and bringing that perspective, and I think from my time as superintendent, really, your drive to make this the best possible district it could be, and really working with, and the highlight of your work has been with our curriculum committee, and all the different things that started before I got here and have continued since I've got here, and working with Mr. Hewitt, and really, we are in a great place, and that is really a credit to your work, your guidance, your perspective, your expertise that you've provided along the way. So, you will have tough shoes to fill for whoever is going to be the next chair of our curriculum committee, which we'll see how that plays out, but thank you so much. And then obviously both of you for the referendum, right? So that was a huge thing that you've worked on over the last, you know, year and a half, and obviously all that work is truly, from my perspective, thankless work to a certain extent with all the things that you've had to do along the way. And then finally Martha, who came on the scene in July and has made a huge impact in five months. So Martha, you are an absolute pleasure, you hit the ground running quickly, and have been a huge support perspective-wise, community input-wise, valuable, is very valuable to this board in a short amount of time. So, you know, down the road, you might want to consider, you know, taking another run at it because I think you have a ton to offer based on your perspectives, and I think on behalf of all the board, we really appreciate you jumping in in a time when we needed another board member and brought incredible value to this board over the last five months. So, truly appreciate it from my perspective. So I do have some certificates for our board members, and I was hoping to get a picture with them. Mr. Harris, you can kind of help me out. We'll come over to the podium, let you get a little picture. So Filomena, if you want to come up first? And we can get on our camera, and I'll just read it out quickly. This certificate is ordered to Filomena Hicks on behalf of the South Hundred and Regional School District for your service of the South Hundred and Regional School Board of Education. Filomena, thank you. Okay, we'll get a picture, a little picture. Lauren, come on up, same thing that I did with her head. And then Martha, come on up. Well, your certificates, and then Andrew, if you can get a picture. That's the best you can get. I'd say cheese, but you know. Very nice. Good?
All right. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries nine zero.
All right, moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Yeah, so, I do have a few slides to share this evening. So obviously the first topic that's been on everyone's mind and you've been following along is where we are with COVID. We all know across our country, across the state of New Jersey, there's been a huge uptick, you know, in the last week or so. These are our latest numbers as of today. I know I had sent out an email today, you know, with a few cases from the middle school and the high school, so you can kind of see where we land right now. Just a reminder, as I've said in many of my emails, all of my emails about COVID, that for some reason if your child does test positive, make sure that you email both the school nurse and the principal. That's especially important on weekends, so obviously we have time to contact trace before Monday. Not happy, obviously, where we are as far as numbers, I don't think anyone is because we were hoping to get out of this and we're not, but one of the things that we were just talking about before the meeting, so, for the month of December, we've had 13 cases. So, that's a lot, but again, it's not horrible compared to some other places that are around us. And if you're not aware, we had one district in particular, which is not too far from us, who had to close down today because they had 30 student cases in one day. So, we're continuing to do everything we possibly can. Obviously, the break is coming at a good time, but when I, when we have the break, I worry about what it could look like when we come back. I think some of this that we're dealing with now could be some of the remnants of Thanksgiving and obviously travel. So just a couple of things I wanted to share. I've been asked by many folks, what does our vaccination status look like in our district? So what you will see is pre-K 12, right now, it's 23, 26.3% of our students are fully vaccinated, for pre-K 6, 7.8%, and then for 7-12, 44%. Keep in mind, this is only based on the information that's been reported to us through ASPEN, our student information system. So, I sent out a reminder, I think last week about it, if your child is vaccinated, please go into ASPEN, and there's an area where you can complete that, that they are fully vaccinated. That's really helpful for our school nurses because when they contact trace, obviously that's the first thing they're looking at to determine who's vaccinated and who's not. So if that information is available and accessible, it saves a lot of time with phone calls and things along those lines. So please do that if you haven't already. And I realize for some of our younger students, many of them from speaking with parents are in the process, right, of vaccination, where maybe they've had one shot already, and then there's a couple of weeks that need to go by, obviously, before the second shot. So my hope is by the time we get back from winter break and get into January, we'll be in a better place.
So Tony, just, just before you move on from that, two things. First of all, on the previous slide where you had the numbers?
Yes.
That's total numbers for the year?
That's for the 2021-22 school year.
Okay, thank you.
Since September, yep.
The second comment is around the ASPEN logging. You're going back into the forms that you filled out at the beginning of the school year and updating that, at that number, or that flag or whatever? But the, the one thing that I want to mention is that that gets updated after the two weeks after the second shot. So you are fully vaccinated after the two weeks after your second shot. So that's when ASPEN should be updated. It's very important to, you know, fully vaccinated means two weeks post-shot number 15.
Correct.
It allows you to put a date in, so the date of the last shot, even if it's like, say this is the date of the last shot, and then the nurse, no, the.
It's been two weeks. And we are working on, just so you know, I've had some conversations with Kim Hawkins, who's our data person, if we could create a little bit more user-friendly, because I know there's multiple steps to get in there. So I said, "Kim, can you create me just a form in there where parents can just come in and check off and not have to go through the whole?" So she's working on that.
Thank you.
Just do not notice.
All right, so I did send this out at the end of last week, it came out on Thursday. So you probably, obviously, realized we moved into the orange, and we were statewide in the orange, and with the orange is a 14-day quarantine. And we had gone from the yellow before, which was 10, with a test-out option, to then 14 with no test-out option, and obviously that didn't go over real well, because our goal is to keep kids in school as much as we can. So after much deliberations, the Health Department came out on Thursday last week and basically said that, you know, they're recommending optimal is 14 days with close contacts with someone who's been positive, but they did a revision to the timeframes to end quarantine, and we're really going back to the rules of the yellow to say, if you're someone who has been a close contact and you decide that you want to get tested between days five and seven and you're negative, then you can come back on that day eight and reduce your quarantine, obviously, by a few days. Or if you're someone who doesn't want to get tested, you can wait 10 days and then come back on day 11, so you're not out for the 14 days. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. The other thing is, they basically said, and you can see in the last sentence, that they're discontinuing the regional transmission risk levels to determine quarantine timeframe. So the whole, you know, yellow, orange, red, typically that determined what, you know, 10 days, 14 days, whatever it's going to be, they're kind of getting rid of that right now and just going with this as their protocol changes. So we put this into place last week on Thursday, as soon as it came out. The Health Department also told us that any students at that point were in quarantine, so let's say they were in quarantine because of a close contact Tuesday, the 14th, these rules could apply. So for some of those students that were out 14, they were able to come back either with testing a little earlier or after 10 days. So that's what we're following now. I got many emails today from parents about, "Are you going to go virtual for two weeks after winter break? Or are you going to go for a week after, or are we going to shut down?" So realize the rules have changed. Last year, it was really left up to districts, and they can make the decision. So I made the decision as superintendent to say, "I'm recommending to the board that we go virtual for two weeks after winter break." We're not allowed to do that anymore, so that's not our decision anymore. Basically, what happens is the only way we can shut down is two ways. If the governor decides that we're going to go on a different path, and now we're going to go remote, or we have the ability to go remote, or if the Health Department comes in and says, "You have an outbreak, you need to shut down." That's kind of what happened with a neighboring district today up the road because of the amount, they had 30 cases in one day. So they're going remote tomorrow, virtual. We had a similar situation earlier in the year at West Amwell, but the decision was made by the Health Department not to close down the district, but to close down the grade level, right? So instead of the whole school, maybe it's a grade level because it's contained. I have a feeling that's more likely to happen, where it could be a grade level, or maybe one building, but not the entire district. Realizing bullet number two, that's the criteria there that they're using to define what an outbreak. So there's multiple pieces in there about, first of all, it's got to be a laboratory test, it's not a home test. If they find out it's a home test, then they're going to ask parents to go get a PCR or an antigen, just to figure out whether or not, you know, it's a positive again, and then some other pieces in play as well, you know, whether or not cases are within a 14-day, they're linked, they don't share households, and they weren't identified as close contacts with each other in another setting during an investigation or contact tracing. So if they do all that and determine, gee, these three cases are tied or more, they're going to make a recommendation else to go remote, whether it's a grade level, a building, or I guess it could be at the district, but more than likely probably on a smaller scale. So I just wanted to get that out there. Realize if I made the decision, "We're going to go virtual after winter break for two weeks," those days would not count towards the 180, and I would need to add those two weeks on to the end of the year in order to make the 180 day, all right? I need to have either the governor or the Health Department, and then I have to email the county and say, "Based on doing contact tracing with the Health Department, Hundred County Health Department, they are recommending we go virtual." And then they're, "Okay, we agree with that." But not, unfortunately, my word doesn't carry that far, only the Health Department's does. So that's where we are. I just wanted a reminder for the holidays, in full disclosure, I've been a little bit loose with this around Thanksgiving because our numbers weren't as high, but now that they've upticked, this is really what we should be following, so, and this is for students and staff, so if we're, if you're fully vaccinated, there's really nothing you have to worry about, but if you're not vaccinated and you're going out of really the tri-state area, you know, outside of New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, Delaware, Pennsylvania, we are at, and you're not vaccinated, we are asking that you quarantine after winter break. A lot of that too depends on how long you're going, right? So if you're going the entire break and coming back to New Jersey, let's say January 2nd, then you're going to need the quarantine, and you still have the option of testing and coming back a little bit earlier. If you're going to go away for next weekend and be back on Monday, Tuesday, then obviously the clock starts once you get back into New Jersey. So what I'm suggesting is reach out to your building principal, and if you're going to be in that situation, we will make arrangements for virtual for you when you come back if you need to quarantine because of travel. So you'll be on Zoom until your quarantine runs out, and then you'll come back to the building. But again, parents, if that is going to impact your child, reach out to the building principal in the next three days before break, and that way we can make sure that everything's set up so on Monday, January 3rd, we have the links ready and everything's ready to go, you know, until they can come back. That's important. Any questions about, from the board first, about COVID? Before I get on to our next topic?
I have a question. Does student vaccination status affect their number of days they have to quarantine if they're exposed, like?
So if they're vaccinated and they're exposed, they don't have to quarantine at all unless they have symptoms.
Okay, thanks.
So, and as we know, some folks that have been vaccinated have contracted COVID, so it's not like, you know, it's a, you know, it's not a possibility, so that's why we're always saying, "Make sure you monitor symptoms." All right, part two of my update is the referendum update. So if you're not aware, which you probably are at this point, we had a group of citizens from West Amwell that filed for a recount of the referendum votes. On Friday, December 10th, a judge ruled a recount for the referendum results and ordered that it take place last Tuesday, the 14th. It took place on Tuesday, the 14th. I was present for the recount at the Hundred County Board of Elections, and the results came out the same way that they were reported to the public on November 2nd, with the number of yes votes compared to the number of no votes. December 27th is the deadline to file a lawsuit to contest the referendum election. In the coming days, I'm sure you will continue to see social media efforts by a citizen group trying to paint a picture that the Board of Education and I acted unethically throughout the entire referendum process. A couple of things I want to just say about that. So for example, I have a feeling that one of the things you'll see is there's going to be information put out there that the Board of Education and I had already an agreement in place with the Jesus School and how much it was going to cost in order for us to use that as part of the LPS renovation. However, I made the decision not to share that information before the referendum vote. I'm here to tell you today that that is not accurate. I'm here to say, yes, we did receive information from the Jesus School, but there's many factors that go into determining what the final price of that contract's going to be. First of all, the timing of the renovation. So is that going to be in 18 months we would need to use the building, 12 months? In the beginning, we had talked about perhaps starting construction in September next year and using the Jesus School for maybe the next 12 to 16 months. Since then, we've had conversations with our architect about possibly not using the Jesus School until the following year, '22, '23, and not even using it next year. We've also talked about what we would need as far as technology. There's a lot of pieces that go into this process. Quite honestly, I wasn't going to get into that before the vote, because if it went, if it was voted no, why are we going to put all that into that when we didn't even need to worry about it? That process will start now, but there is no final number on how much that's going to cost yet, and I promise you that as soon as there is, you will be the first one to know, meaning the community and the board, because obviously that agreement needs to be board-approved and will be open to the public. So there's a lot of moving parts, it is a negotiation process, we don't have all the information to know what we think that final cost is going to be, but I promise, as soon as we do, everyone will have that information. And then the Board of Education, and I stand by the fact that the process was fair and that the voters have spoken twice on a recount and passed the referendum. We thank the voters of South Hundred and Community who supported the referendum on November 2nd. As I've said many times, and the board has said on many times, addressing our facility challenges is the final piece of the regionalization process. And the last thing I'm going to say about this topic is that, quite honestly, in my opinion, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, I'm speaking as the superintendent right now, I think it's unfortunate, you know, honestly, that the citizen group that asked for the recount and more than likely is going to file a lawsuit against the election, I absolutely, you know, am confident that will probably happen. Right now, we're more concerned with politics than they are concerned about what's best for our kids and our staff educationally. The reality is, is that our staff and our kids deserve new facilities, they deserved them for a long time, they deserve to have the educational opportunities expanded and the resources for students available, and in the end, to make it a better school district. So I just wanted to say that, I felt it was necessary to say it. I'm not one to get into banter back and forth on social media, so you're not going to see me on Facebook and any of those different platforms, but I felt it's important when there is a lot of information being put out there, and unfortunately, a lot of inaccurate information, and I'm assuming there'll be more to come, I think it was important for me to say that tonight. Any questions?
Mr. Suzo, I have one thing. You can certainly speak for me with that sentiment, because I, you know, I feel the same way. So your views represent mine as well.
And also.
Same.
All right. Good?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, moving on to public comment. Just a reminder, we have procedures and requirements that include standards of conduct that need to be followed by members of the public during the public comments. If a member of the public becomes disruptive during a public meeting, including during any period for public comment, the member of the board charged for running the public meeting shall warn the disruptive member of the public that continued disruption may result in being prevented from speaking during a public meeting or removed from the public meeting. Disruptive conduct includes sustained inappropriate behaviors such as, but not necessarily limited to shouting, interruption, and the use of preventative comments as seen as abusive, obscene, or defamatory. Members are empowered to invite, or, members of the public are invited to address the board of any matter for a maximum of three minutes during the portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, first and last name, and your municipality. Public comment is now open. If anybody would like to come up and say something, please come on up. Michael?
Hey everybody. First, before we begin, Tony, I actually have to say, the K through six vaccination stats, my kids were one of the first to get vaccinated, and they literally just hit that mark, so 7.8% is pretty darn good. We're talking about 30 kids there, so. And now, on to referendum, two votes. That's literally my husband and I, that's one household, but it is a victory for the referendum. It's also though, a call to action. You can't really get a more divided community than a referendum that passes with two votes. And as this term of the Board of Ed comes to an end, I just want to say thank you to those members of the Board of Ed who have moved with a consciousness of that division, really seeking compromise. And as a resident of West Amwell, I really would like to especially thank our West Amwell members and also Stockton members who, in the minority on the board, realize that compromise is a way forward, and it's a must and not a maybe. The last several years I've been here watching have not been easy for you guys, and it's my belief that the majority of you have operated with the best interests of our district and our children in mind, and I thank you for that. With that said, a new board will organize in January, and the call to action from a referendum cannot be clearer. You're not just building new facilities, you need to rebuild this district. I can't ignore my neighbors who spoke out at the last meeting, but more importantly, I can't ignore the test results that Mr. Hewitt presented. The distractions of facilities planning and hopefully the distraction of the Class III officer debate are now with our administration and handled. I also pray that the complications of this pandemic will soon be in our past, recent news notwithstanding. This board in the future needs to focus on uniting our district, and I hope that would be around enabling our teachers and students to improve these test results. In considering this focus, I would also hope that the new board carefully consider the new curriculum committee chair. Tony wasn't lying that it's going to be hard shoes to fill. Lauren, I appreciate the work you've done with this board. I would also hope that the political bodies in our sending towns would support the board in these actions instead of offering additional distractions. To my friends and neighbors, I ask you not to, only to look towards a reorganized board to move the education of our children forward, but also focus them to do so. I understand that all of us have distinct beliefs and priorities, but we need to move forward together. Our district must unite in the vision of a regional school district that is stronger and more capable than one that is divided. If I could just beg 10 more seconds. Our communities are unique and impassioned, but equally strong and capable. Let's pass these traits on to our future, to our children. We can show them how much they matter, we can show them what any of the educators who are in this district already know. Education is a higher calling, and that they are valuable enough for us to disavow the politics of division that has absolutely no place here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? No? Okay, we have another chance to speak. The next public comment, we'll close down the first one.
We don't have any responses on Google.
No responses on Google Forms? All right, moving on to Buildings, Grounds, Transportation, Finance, and Safety. Diana?
Sure. So we met last.
Anybody else like to speak? No? Okay, we have another chance to speak for the next public comment. We'll close down the first one.
We don't have any responses on Google.
No responses on Google Forms. All right, moving on to buildings, ground, transportation, finance, and safety. Diana.
So we met last Thursday. We continued conversations about the bus driver shortage, which, as we talked about, is national. But we are in the process of hiring at least one, onboarding a bus driver, and then also have another sub coming. So that's promising news. In terms of buildings, we finished installation of the new scoreboards that we ordered. So that would be stayed in the high school basketball gym, football field, and the soccer field. And the last thing I just wanted to highlight you'll see was talked about was our auditorium project. That's something we talked about earlier this year as something to work into a summertime project that was last updated in 2015. Is that it?
2005.
Oh, 2005. So it's definitely a lot of the, a lot of the equipment has become obsolete. I'm sorry, Jim.
Failure on failure, that's all right.
Yeah. And our visual has completely failed at this point. So we've had to move that portion up to now because we do have performances coming up in the spring, so we want to be able to accommodate that. So that is all I have in terms of my update. I'd like to move items A through K.
Second. So for discussion, any board members having to add? All right, Andrew.
We'll start with Megan Warren.
Yes.
Lauren Brunnstrom-Bills?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Trace McChulley?
Yes.
Diana Prusso?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marina?
Yes.
Philomena Hanks?
Yes.
Kevin Cobles?
Yes.
Richard Carey?
All right, personnel.
So just to reiterate what Diana said, I've never been so excited to hire a bus driver. So as you're aware, things are challenging right now, and we are adding someone, and Diana said we have a few more down the road, one who's going to be a sub, so that's really important. We do have a retirement coming at the end of this month, so that individual will fit in very nicely. So we talked about that. We also, you'll see on the agenda is a job description. So I've spoken before about expanding a program for special education for a student population focused on practical living skills and also hopefully eventually, as they age up, working within our maybe school environment, but more importantly, within our community. So the job description that's on the agenda for approval is a teacher coordinator of our work-based program. And it has some pretty extensive amounts of qualifications that go along with it. But our hope is that when we get back from winter break, we're going to start our search process to fill that position sooner than later because we have a lot of work to do from now until September when we'll be converting a space within our building here for that program and obviously welcoming students into that program starting in September. And then the last piece, we did have some initial conversations with the board. So if you're not aware, our contract with our association, SHREA, South Hunter Regional Education Association, is expiring at the end of June of this year. So the goal would be that as soon as we have our reorganization, we will establish a board negotiation team, and the hope is that we would start negotiations either at the end of January, beginning of February, with the hope to be, have that resolved by the end of school year.
Okay. Need a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, open for discussion. Everybody have anything to add? Andrew, small poll.
Lauren Brunnstrom-Bills?
Yes.
Martha Dennis?
Yes.
Jim Gallagher?
Yes.
Trace McChulley?
Yes.
Diana Prusso?
Yes.
Ronnie Todd Marina?
Yes.
Megan Warren?
Yes.
Philomena Hanks?
Yes.
Kevin Cobles?
Yes.
Curriculum and Technology, Lauren.
Okay. Well, we have items A through D to consider tonight for approval. I want to give some highlights based on the work that we did in the committee this month, but also really to kind of roll that into some larger highlights. And I'm really appreciative and thank you, you know, to Tony and to Michael as well for your comments, comments about what's happened, happening in the committee. Of course, thanks to Jeff, really through being, you know, the professional work in this very heavy lift, which is a heart thing of what we do here in the district. So I just want to say, you know, I've been on the board for three years. And when I came in, you know, curriculum was one of my, it was, that was really, I said, I really want to be there in that committee, you know, as myself, as a historian at Virgin Valley Community College. I write a few curriculum. I've been on our curriculum committee and a big integral part of my work there, but I'll be seeing it different ways than, in that we don't have so many of the state departments and of the kind of integrations and connections that we have to consider here in the process of the work. But I just really wanted to highlight, I think in particular, that there was one thing when we did our thing, and every one of the board will remember this, right? That the job of the board member is not to run the district, but to make sure that the district is well-run. And that, of course, you know, resonates with all of us. And I think that one of the things that's really stood out is that as a board, you know, we've managed a lot of really heavy lifts. You know, we conducted a superintendent search, which I think has really not only amplified the impact of, you know, of really our work as a board, but has really set the district on a powerful course of excellence. And I just want to say, I think that's obvious in every conversation I've had with every member of the public in the work, in the conversations that we've had as a board, I think in the, so I kind of want, I just wanted to highlight that. I think it really deserves mentioning. Also, that as a board, we did that work together. And I think that was a really powerful part of our process of collaboration. And I know this is a little off, slightly off-topic for my committee purpose. I wanted to seize the mic for a moment when I had it and say a few of these things. So, you know, when I was reflecting, I've been chair of the curriculum committee for two years now. And so for me, that work has really been rooted in our focus on equity in particular and really hoping, I think, for our district, right, to really reflect and amplify the experiences and identities of our diverse students and community members. And I really see that work front and center, and I think that's really a powerful legacy that we're creating here. I see also the empowerment of our teachers and our staff to really, not just, you know, write these documents and stick them in a folder, but to really draw meaning and power out of that conversation around what, what do we do in the classroom and what is that relationship like with our students? And so I think that's also reflected in the types of documents that we're approving and considering in curriculum. And, you know, I think also, I just wanted to highlight as well that the, you know, that the cooperation as a regional district is really profound. And I think in some ways, it's striking that some of the criticism that we're facing now is really like, you know, kind of trying to take that apart when that's so obvious, I think, and so powerful, the things we've been able to accomplish and achieve. When I came in, I was drawn to this work because of the facilities where we were. We couldn't get anywhere. It was, right, it was very chaotic and very, it was just really disrupting our ability to move, to move anywhere. We were kind of stuck, I'll say. And I felt drawn to this work and to this service. And I think that seeing, coming in in three years and moving from that really kind of stuck positions altogether, all of us, to through multiple plans, through, you know, selecting a plan and working together to select a plan and work on it to take feedback, to move forward then, to bring it to a vote, and to have that vote pass on the first time, which is very rare according to the School Boards Association. I think that is profound. It really is. And I know it's not a landslide, and I know it's not, you know, kind of maybe some of the things we might have hoped, but considering all the crisis and the tragedy that's in place with the flood, and also how we worked together through the flood, I really think that is, stands, should be held up as a symbol of the power that we have as a regional district to really build something together that's meaningful in these schools and in these communities. So, all right, so I'll get back to my, like, my actual job here, which is to summarize the curriculum. But, okay, one more thing I just want to say is that when I came in here, the second day I was on this board, I went into negotiations. And literally the second day, I was like, okay, yeah, how long? You think I'll be home? Maybe even around 9:00 PM. And of course, we said that I think we were there till, what, 4:00 in the morning? But, and those of us that are on, you know, they remember, it was really, again, another powerful moment where I feel like as a district, we came together to support our teachers and to say that you matter and to say that we invest in you and that that spirit of collaboration and cooperation, again, reflected in the contact that we were able to negotiate. And I really am hopeful that that spirit will also come about in this new round of negotiations and that we're also able to recognize the contributions of our administrators and also in helping and supporting their organization recently as well. So I think that's all really, really valuable. So, all right, so curriculum, what we have up for this, for approval tonight, right, you've got a long set of documents that we have reviewed. That's a part of the process really of updating the articulation in particular between activities and the delivery. So we're really particularly updating the integration with 21st Century Learning Standards, social emotional learning, and career-ready practices. So some of that's the newer framework from the state, and we're looking to see, right, how that reflects in the other of us in our own curriculum. The financial literacy I wanted to highlight. This is a high school graduation requirement, and that has been updated as well. The visual performing arts is also a number of different courses. We're aligning in this case with national and state standards. And that, I think, is really significant as well. Again, showing, you know, we're like, trying to stay, you know, we're putting into what's going on in these fields. And certainly, these are areas that I think are important, not just to say like a well-rounded student, not just as extracurriculars, but as core curricular activities to cultivate. And not every district really invests in them, except that we are. So we will be considering, also I'll highlight next year, new media arts and some new electives in the areas of visual performing arts. So that's something as well to look forward to. And again, as you've seen from this committee over the course of the last two years of my term, I can see too, right, a lot of new courses have been added. And I think that's, again, really valuable and also reflects the way in which I think I see our staff being cultivated and being encouraged to really, you know, try new things, spread out, really invest in themselves as professionals in their field and what they want to do and what they can bring to the district and share with other faculty and students. So we have, in the minutes, I've got a lot of detail about the English Language Learner, this three-year program plan, which is something we have to submit to the state, and we stop for approval tonight. I just wanted to mention, this has been an area we've discussed, I know, as a board before in some of our different committee work, is that the number of students that we serve who are English language learners would typically necessitate that we have an ESL program, a bilingual, I'm sorry, a bilingual program. So we've, because of our size, we've been able to, usually have a waiver for this. But what we're trying to do is, we're particularly looking for feedback from the ESL study that the board approved earlier in the fall to think about where and when to offer perhaps some bilingual instruction, even though it's very difficult to find bilingual certified teachers. Obviously, they're very, yeah, in demand. Thank you, Jim. So some of the things that we have been doing that I think are really helpful here and integrate with community involvement, as well as doing entry and exit criteria, home language surveys to try to identify needs. I know our current advisory meetings are very active, and that's an important group that ties directly, right, to the experiences of the student population. We are also looking at identifying needs at specific grade levels. And so rating is one area, and reading is the next, and that really is based on the recent testing report that I presented on. So I just want to highlight, again, this is ongoing work, kind of thinking about knowing and discovering what our needs are now and then continuing to plan for the future, obviously, because the investment that we make, right, in supporting these students really multiplies, not just in their own progress, but also in the way in which they are integrated and supported. And I think also, we talked in the committee, right, about the ability for our, for our students growing up in English language speaking homes to have a more integrated and connected experience with their classmates who are growing up speaking other languages in their homes. And that is another aspect that I think could be sort of where you work here. So we talked about that and some connections there. So that's something to look forward to, and I think discussed as well in the other committees. So finally, we've got these portfolio appeals, which would be approving specific staff to review. This is kind of putting that in place in case it is necessary. And that's for math and ELA. We have the, okay, so we're not, so we've talked about in personnel, the new position, the special education teacher coordinator of work-based learning. And I just, also wanted to highlight, right, this is part of our larger work, both to bring students that now currently have to go out of district replacement back into our district, which saves money and also really is much, allows them to remain part of our school community as opposed to being in and out of district placement. And I think both of those are really valuable. So that, wanted to highlight, that that's in process. And also thanks to Cheryl Lincoln also for her in really helping to study and develop this new program that will allow students to be doing work-based learning here in this school setting. So, all right. Then finally, we, let me see, so we have the Q Sac District Performance Review that we are approving. There is, did the bill get?
Today. I haven't heard yet.
We haven't heard yet. All right, so there was a bill pending that would postpone Q Sac. And so that we'll roll with that as it develops. But in the time of its own being, we are approving tonight to have that in place to be able to use the, this is a refuse to score ourselves in the county uses to approve us. So that is, those are all the items for approval for the board to consider tonight. And also, just to mention, the school choice lottery took place, and will be filling 18 seats, which I believe took place, the lottery took place last.
Last Wednesday, yep.
Okay. So the notifications will go out before break, and the students and parents must return the attention role for it by January 6th. There are three grade levels that are closed, and those 18 seats are broken out across the district. So, yeah, okay, one more thing, sorry. You're like, all right. The current, after-school two-correl program, this is not a approval, just wanted to highlight it. At the middle school, high school, I think it started the week of the 10th to help bridge the time between school and sport practice. And this is another thing that we are hoping to do to increase access for those students who were not, if they went home, were not able to get themselves back to school to participate. And so, again, these are, you know, I think just examples of some of the steps, both large and small, that our district is making to really support access in an equitable way, and also, again, to really cultivate and allow students the space to really develop, you know, themselves into whatever their future might be, whatever their vision is within the supportive, small school environment that we offer. So that is my last update. That is the longest one I've ever given. Thank you all for listening. I appreciate deeply the opportunity to serve in this role, unlike some people who maybe come to this point in time and go, oh, hallelujah, I don't know what I'm going to do with myself. So, anyway. My kids think I go to meetings, they're like, buy me another meeting! So they think my job is meetings. But, anyway, I do know and believe that they, my children who are young will really, along with, like, so many other members of our community who both are in our district now and who are yet convinced to join us, will really reap the benefits of the work of this board. That's what I'm proud to have in part. So with that, I move items A to D, A through D for approval.
Second. Any questions, comments from the board?
I have two comments, actually. One is that I think it's great, curriculum should be the longest segment of a board meeting. Isn't that what we're here for? I mean, this is, this is the, this is the good stuff, I always felt. So my second is something that we discussed during our last meeting. We have heard some, we have heard some questions about folks who have questioned. We have heard some, we have heard some questions about folks who have questioned about, you know, how curriculum is approved. And so I thought it might be useful and, you know, I'm happy to talk about Lauren, if you want to say a few words about, you know, the process. What does the, you know, what does the board curriculum committee, you know, actually do? And I will say, we don't write curriculum. That is not our job. That's, I think you mentioned at the outset, our job is to make sure that the schools are well-run, not the run of the schools. We have fantastic teachers here. We let the teachers write the curriculum, okay? They are writing that curriculum and making sure that what is being taught in the classes adheres to certain state and national standards. Those things are all set out for us, okay? So our teachers are creating that plan, that program. And the curriculum committee, we are working with Mr. Hewitt, who does an amazing job, again, get my hat if I were wearing one, and has been doing an amazing job for now five years of doing, of, you know, putting us in a good place in curriculum. We have been updating, they're constantly updating and improving, trying to improve the curriculum. As, as board members, we do read, we review. There are twenty-five curriculum items for approval tonight. We have read every one. They are eight, ten, fifteen pages long, okay? It is not, we take this very seriously as board members, it's a point that I'd like to make. You know, we are not buying in some lack of curriculum from somebody else. This is, this is ours, created for our district to meet our unique situation. So that is, I just wanted to mention that. That is what we do as board members. That is how, that is our role in the curriculum. Lauren, you want to add anything? Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you Jim. I think, you know, again, the process may seem very opaque, you know, but especially if you haven't been in it, but, you know, certainly I think it is important that we highlight, right, that curriculum is, you know, it's not a static process. And it's also, again, I think under the, you know, your leadership twenty, it is become more and more intentional. And that's really important to highlight as well and that we as board members on curriculum committee, you know, we let the teachers and we let the administrators bring up expertise in their subjects and in their classroom experiences and in, you know, in their leadership to creating the curriculum and then we review it in mind with our goal to the, you know, leading, creating, kind of guiding the district in our goals and in our values, but letting that process unfold and that it is, it is a lot of work. And we do review all the documents and we do discuss, as you saw tonight in my notes and as I said in my, in my updates, you know, we do talk about the curriculum, not just in the process of reviewing it, but also in terms of the longer vision of what we're trying to support here and where we should invest our resources financially and in professional development and other areas based off the recommendations of our, of our faculty and administrators. So, yeah, we don't bring, you know, it's not an ideological process, it's an organic process that reflects the needs of our students and our community.
Alright, Andrew Robo.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Trace Pichul.
Yes.
Diana Prusso.
Yes.
Ronnie Tom Arena.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Lauren Brown Strongfield.
Yes.
Philomena Hanks.
Yes.
Kevin Cobles.
Yes.
Ocean Paris.
Andrew Robo.
The policy committee did not meet this month. We will resume our meetings in January. That said, we do have two policies for a approval on the second reading, which means they will only affect, as I said, this evening. One of those is a revised transportation policy. We read this last month. The other is the emergency virtual or remote instruction program, which is similar to what we did last year and we will only put that in place as officials are known in his superintendent report if the state, the governor or the health department requires us to have three or more days out of school. With that said, I would, I would make a motion to approve Irvan Hay.
Second.
Discussion.
Any questions on those policies?
Then, alright, Robo.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Trace Pichul.
Yes.
Diana Prusso.
Yes.
Ronnie Tom Arena.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Lauren Brown Strongfield.
Yes.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Philomena Hanks.
Yes.
Kevin Cobles.
Yes.
So, Mary, come here.
We met on December fourteenth in person and we discussed displaced students, survey responses from families who live in the district but send their children elsewhere for school and also talked about the idea of highlighting student academics in addition to athletics. Some of the ideas shared from the survey included that people chose other schools because they were following their faith, family tradition, they were looking for more academic rigor, special education services. One need for grammar and spelling instruction was cited in the survey. Some suggestions that were received from the survey included the idea to increase, increase the size of the district, services and approaches, change approaches towards behavior, gifted and talented programming as well. So they were just some ideas shared from the survey. Keep in mind, there were only eight responses received out of approximately thirty families. So I personally wouldn't see that as generalizable as an educational researcher, but I think that the ideas are very valid and worth thinking about. In addition, we also learned that there are seven students currently displaced and being transported to the school district from outside of the school district boundaries. And we talked about highlighting student academics in the regular communications that are going out, social media and, and other avenues that we're communicating. It's been a great year on the school community committee. I hope next year you'll continue to focus on expanding communication with the community, improving the website as we've made great strides already, also building off of communications like the newsletter that are going out regularly to the community and video showcasing the learning. On a personal note, thank you for the recognition. For the past three years, it's been a meaningful experience being a part of the thoughtful team that is this board. Each of you take, are truly dedicated and put the students first and I've always appreciated that about the team. Also, thank you to Kevin and Tony in particular too, who both put in long hours and worked tirelessly to advance the district forward, so thank you.
Next. Nothing to move, right?
Nothing to move.
Alright, there's a couple other things to approve, retain information. retain information.
Let's make a motion to approve item A and B.
Second. Alright, vote for discussion, anybody have discussions on item A and B? Okay, Robo, Andrew.
Trace Pichul.
Yes.
Diana Prusso.
Yes.
Ronnie Tom Arena.
Yes.
Megan Warner.
Yes.
Lauren Brown Strongfield.
Yes.
Martha Dennis.
Yes.
Jim Gallagher.
Yes.
Philomena Hanks.
Yes.
Kevin Cobles.
Yes.
Ocean Paris.
Okay, moving on into the second part of our public comment. Again, rules apply, please state your first and last name, municipality. Now we will open up second part of public comment. Anybody have anything, please come on up. Alright, sounds good. We will close the second part of public comment. And we do have any need to go into executive session tonight.
Before we get to that, we do have two group of volunteers.
You have a question that came in.
Yep, here's one. The first one is from Dave Beaumont. West Anwell, Dave asks, can you articulate what contesting the election means? How's it different from a recount? Who can file for the contest? So basically, what that means, contesting elections, the argument can be made by one side that the referendum election was unfair for whatever reason. There's a variety of reasons that they could choose from. They could also perhaps go down the road of folks who maybe their votes were not accepted for a variety of reasons and try to contest why they were not accepted. So that is a, if there is a suit that's filed, that's typically what falls under that as far as contesting the election. And then, let's see, is that Matt Larkin? Lambertville?
Sorry, John, I think there were two other parts.
Oh, Dave? Did I miss that? What else?
Oh, yes, who can, that was a different, a different file.
Who can challenge it?
Oh, who can challenge it? Anyone can, with legal representation. So really, up until the twenty-seventh, anyone can file, confess. Is that everything?
Yeah.
And then, Matt, from Lambertville, Matt Larkin, are there plans to go virtual? Okay, I think I already talked about that. Are there plans to go virtual the first weekend, January? So at this point, no, unless something changes either from the governor or from the health department.
Okay, we do have any need to go into executive session tonight. We will take no action when we come out. We will just be adjourned. I need a motion to, some move. Go on your head, second.
Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Any abstention?
Can we have a five minute review?
Yes, we can. Same room as we.
Five minutes, don't be late.
No.
Motion to return. No, I can't. I can't make the motion.
No, she does good, so move.
All right, Diana and Tracy. All right, and then to, uh, motion to adjourn.
Let's all make the party before we make that motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Martha's made the motion.
Martha and Lauren.
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Everyone have a great night, stay warm.
Happy holidays.
I'm just gonna...